I now call this meeting of Peoria Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, August 13th, to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Ross. Stephen. Dr. Davidson, Abilas.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from the July 16th, 2018, and August 6th, 2018 meetings. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Abilas.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is announcements. Do any board members have announcements?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson.
I got two of them, Mr. Adler. The first one, back to school schedule, August 15th through the 31st. Peoria Public Schools will be on a shortened schedule from Wednesday, August 1st until Friday, August 31st. Schools will dismiss one hour early. The regular schedule will begin on Tuesday, September 4th. Also, online registration closes tomorrow at midnight. If you are unable to register online, visit your school office. School offices are open 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. If you are new to the district or your child will be attending a different school, you must provide proof of address. Registration and enrollment requirements are listed at www.poriapublicschools.org. Click on Students and Parents and Enrollment and Registration.
Thank you. Mrs. Jackson.
Peoria Public Schools Foundation Grants. Teachers, applications for the Peoria Public School Foundation Teacher Grants are available on the Peoria Public Schools Foundation website. The grants are awarded in partnership with the Murray and Rena Yeoman's Fund of the Community Foundation of Central Illinois. The maximum grant is $1,000. The Peoria Public School Foundation also awards field experience grants in amounts of $500 or less. The application deadline for both grants is October 1, 2018. October 1, 2018.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
I'm going to match around the grants. PNC First Grant Program. The PNC First Grant Program provides teachers the opportunity to apply for a grant of up to $1,000 to assist in the implementation of innovative and creative classroom projects that otherwise would not occur due to lack of funding. Applications are being accepted online through October 1, 2018. To learn more and see the grant requirements, visit PNC's website, www.pnc.com, or email Samantha Conrad at samanthaconrad@pnc.com.
Thank you. Mrs. Russell.
Because We Care Campaign. Last week, Peoria Public Schools principals, assistant principals, teachers, interventionists, social workers, and administrators began walking school neighborhoods and visiting families' homes as part of the Because We Care Attendance Campaign. Unless ill students must be at school and in every class every day to succeed academically. School staff will continue to contact families regarding attendance as classes get underway. Remember, every student, every class, every day.
Thank you. Any announcements? Dr. Davidson, Abilas.
Buenas noches, bienvenidos, good evening, welcome. First day compliance reminder. Recuerde que todos los estudiantes deben entender requisitos de salud, incluyendo exámenes físicos y inmunizaciones antes del primer día de clases, el miércoles 15 de agosto. Para hacer una cita, los padres pueden llamar al Departamento de Salud de Peoria en 309-679-6655. También en el website, www.hhsil.com. Now here's what all that meant. Remember that all students must have health requirements, including physical exams and immunizations, fulfilled by the first day of school on Wednesday, August 15th. To make an appointment, parents can call the Peoria City County Health Department at 309-679-6655. Visit the Hartland Health Service website at www.hhsil.com. Students will be allowed to start school if they have proof of a scheduled appointment. Estudiantes se les permitirá comenzar la escuela si tienen pruebas de cita. Gracias.
Mr. Shaw.
Alignment Peoria extends an invitation to participate to Peoria area professionals for the kindergarten through grade five career awareness pilot. This program would require a one-time, 60 to 90-minute volunteer commitment. Alignment Peoria is particularly seeking professionals representing emergency services, agriculture, business and entrepreneurship, media and communications, health and fitness, natural resources, government, IT and programming, manufacturing, medical fields, engineering, and education and training. To learn more, please visit alignmentpeoria.com.
All right, thank you. The Peoria Public Schools Foundation would like to invite everyone to join them for a new uniform fundraiser this year. The Back to School Brats and Brew will occur next Thursday, August 23rd, at the Riverfront Museum from 5 to 8. You can find more out about the event by visiting www.ppsfoundation.org. I am told that there is a well-known funk band, Dexter O'Neill and the Funk Yard, that will perform, as well as food and drink, of course. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Community Contribution Award. For tonight's recognition, we'll recognize a group of volunteers from actually just across our street here. Our neighbors at First English Lutheran Church have become familiar faces in the halls of Von Steuben Middle School. From snack packs to tutoring, they help make a positive difference in the lives of students, and they make the lives easier for teachers and staff to support them as well. This time, I'd like to invite Von Steuben Principal Tom Ryan up to the podium to say a few words about the volunteers and their partnership.
Thank you. They've come, they have become a pretty permanent fixture in the building, they being several members of the church next door, and they do this free gratis, of course. In fact, we just solidified a little bit of what's going to happen Wednesday when the kids arrive, and last year, they were there. This year, they will be there with pencils and big smiles. They do tutor our students. They get to know our students and have great rapport with our students, and the students love having them into tutor. It helps us because, again, they do that from the depths of their heart. I would be remiss not to throw out the name Kathy Neptune. She's a little gal about this tall, but quite firecracker. She's one of them you just, I've learned, just get out of the way. Because I can't, I can't get anything completed, and she's already doing. So she wheels up, she's got those backpacks, unloads them, and again, get out of the way, because it's cloud of dust and 10 yards with a first down. So anytime I send an email, a text, or make a phone call, she makes it happen along with the crew next door. To have them right across the street and respond as quickly as they do is invaluable. We love having them in the building, and the kids love having them there, too. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'd love to invite that group up to the podium. On behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Frank has a small token of our appreciation. We really appreciate all that you do for our students, and we look forward to the continued partnership with your organization.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Merrily Tilly, and I'm the designated commentator tonight. Our pastor Ryan is instrumental in encouraging all of us to get involved in whatever we can, and as a member of the First English Congregation, I get to tell you how much we have grown because of our involvement in, at Von Steuben. We began the snack pack program, as was mentioned, under the leadership of Kathy Neptune, and she has a corps of really faithful assembly line members, as well as shuttling these snack packs back and forth. And our members have generously donated week after week, and by doing that, we have learned the joy of sharing God's abundance with other people. And then we participated in the book fair and the family fun nights, and that got us a little better acquainted with some of the families that are our neighbors in the East Bluff community. And finally, our tutors from last year are unanimous in praising the staff who welcomed, valued, and helped us, and even more so the students who were eager to learn, easy to work with, and a joy to get to know. We loved seeing our tuterees make progress. As one tutor responded, "I will never tire of seeing a student's eyes light up with understanding." And so our involvement at Von Steuben has fostered a sense of purpose and unity in our church, and we have been blessed by this connection to our school. Thank you.
Thank you again. The next item on our agenda, slightly new agenda item, is some remarkable spirit recognitions. We often remark that remarkable happens every day in Peoria Public Schools. I believe that's true. The new year brings with it new opportunities to recognize the contributions that our staff make to the success of our students and our district. So starting tonight, I'll take a few moments to honor some team members who we think embody that remarkable spirit here. These are individuals who've gone above and beyond the call of duty in big ways and small, and they support our students and their colleagues. They're enthusiastic, passionate, and positive, and while they acknowledge problems, they seek to proactively find solutions. And so we think that that is embodied in remarkable spirit. Our first remarkable spirit honoree is Resource Officer Lamont Johnson. Officer Johnson has been with Peoria Public Schools for more than 20 years, and joined the School Safety Department in 2002. Recently, while off-duty and on vacation, and I think probably proof that you're never really on vacation, Officer Johnson encountered a family with a life-threatening crisis, and he stepped in to help. And so at this time, I'd like to invite Chief Boone to the podium and tell us a little bit more about Officer Johnson's story.
Got to get him up here. Good evening, and thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. Karat, for this opportunity to honor one of our guys, one of our own. I've been blessed with a team that genuinely, genuinely loved children and genuinely loved this district. I wouldn't have it any other way, and I push them every day to be that way. Some officers don't even need any coaching or pushing. Definitely, we're going to honor one of those today. Tonight, we honor one of our standout officers, Officer Lamont Johnson. He answered the call when saving the life of a child off-duty on his vacation. The Fairview Heights Police Department sent this letter thanking him. "It is an honor to write this letter of appreciation to recognize School Resource Officer Lamont Johnson. His actions on May 27, 2018 were nothing short of, short of heroic. On that day, a call was dispatched to our officers of a child who was in distress and convulsing. Officer Johnson happened to be on scene and observed the child stop breathing. He immediately reacted and provided the child with rescue breaths and chest compressions for several seconds until the child regained consciousness. Officer Johnson then remained with the child in the air-conditioned vehicle and monitored the child's condition until medical assistance arrived. The child was alert and breathing when the ambulance service arrived to transport, transport him for further evaluation. The successful outcome of the call was in no doubt due to the quick actions of Officer Lamont Johnson. Because of him, this child is here with us today. We can't thank Officer Johnson enough for his heroic actions on that day. What could have been an incredible loss of life for the family has turned into a celebration of life for this child's saved life. Sincerely, Nicholas Galius, Chief of Police." The parents of this young man wanted to be here tonight, but were unable to. They sent their heartfelt thanks for your actions, Officer Johnson, in saving their little boy. They told me that they know that they, that he may not be here today if it weren't for you being placed at the right place at the right time. From our department, we honor you with our life-saving bar to commemorate this extraordinary event.
He hates recognition. He doesn't like those things. He even told me this event just in passing, and I had to do research and find all this stuff. So he's that type of guy. He's gotten over 200 free haircuts for kids at Glen Oak. We have the turkey giveaway every year. He raises the most money, and he always comes in my office and says, "Chief, don't tell anybody. I'm going to kill you." But I had to tell somebody today because you saved the child's life, and that meant a lot. So.
Actually, President Adler, the police chief in the other county, the other city, actually sent a note to us, and that's how, that's how I found out about it. So he did not tell us.
Well, thank you for sharing.
Did you mention he makes the best barbecue?
We have to have another award for that.
All right. We, we do have another remarkable spirit award to present this evening. This is for another longtime employee. Pam Johnson joined Peoria Public Schools 19 years ago. She's worn a few different hats in that time, including clerical. For the last several years, she's been part of our transportation team. As a bus driver, Pam has built relationships with many of the international baccalaureate students, particularly on her route through the uplands and west Peoria. She greets them with smiles and goes out of her way to get to know them. Pam even takes time to learn their birthdays and send them birthday cards. The kids think those cards are pretty special, and they're also impressed when they find a $2 bill inside. Now I'll turn the podium over to Director of Transportation, Josh Collins, to tell us a little bit more about Pam's story.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, I appreciate you guys recognizing us, recognizing Pam. She's an absolutely outstanding employee. It's always a great day when the director of a department has one of their employees recognized, as we did this morning, and it's a fantastic day when you have two. It just goes to show the remarkable staff that I have, the, the leadership that they have with their peers, and what they do for our students every day. We're the first ones to greet them, we're the last ones to say goodnight, and we're very proud of that. I think Ms. Johnson does an excellent job. And by the way, her birthday's coming up, because I know this, because every time it's her birthday, I always have a Snickers bar on my desk. She brings in Snickers bars for everybody in the staff, not only just the staff, the drivers, her kids, everyone. And just on a side note, Ms. Johnson shared with me that she was Chief Boone's, I think, pre-K teacher at one point. So she's been around. So.
First of all, I would like to thank the board. My allergies are flaring up. I feel very special tonight. I was told to be here, and my God, you guys know a lot about me. Yes, it is definitely true. I love my students. Everybody get a $2 bill, and I make sure that, that particular birthday card goes in the mail, because a lot of students don't get mail in, in, you know, envelopes or anything in the mail. So I want to make sure they get that on their special days. And on that card, I always ask him, "Please let me know that you received this card to let them, to say thank you that I received my card." And every morning, we have bus announcements, so they, they know the rules. Good morning, everybody. That's why I tell everybody, "Good morning." And they don't say no. I say, "Yes, it's a good morning," because you guys are up and you're on the bus. So I just appreciate my students. I love them all, and Lamont, DeMario Boone, Mr., Mr. Booth, his, his wife, they all were my daycare students. I have, so I thank you again. Thank you. I love you all.
All right. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the district presentation on the 2018-2019 preliminary budget. Thank you, Mr. Wells. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is the district presentation on the 2018-2019 preliminary budget. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Sometimes.
Uh-oh. Apparently pushed the wrong button. Turned it off. Sorry. Let the record reflect that the local TV camera's literally glazed over when we went to the budget.
Oh, no.
We're just a little less than 100 slides. We need to get kind of moving here.
Hey, hey. Yeah, Carla.
Shaw, the word, Shaw, the word.
There it goes. Success. All right. Tonight, we're going to talk about the preliminary budget for 2018-19. Thanks for having us, President Adler, Dr. Karat, school board, all the audience. I'm sure they're, this is the most, the highlight of the evening for everybody. Always, highlight of my evening, anyway. The budget team that puts together this budget every year, Mick Willis, CFO, Carla Eman, Director of Budgets and Compliance, and myself, Mike McKinsey, the comptroller. I say it's the budget team because we really do this as a team approach. There are certain parts that Carla does, there are certain parts that I do, and then we kind of put it all together and then go over it, trying to find errors that, you know, things that we've forgotten or whatever. So really, it's a team approach, the way we do our budget here. This is the requirements for adopting a budget. We are, tonight, on August 13th, the reason we're doing it tonight, and this is the first time you've seen it, we did not have it in the package on Fri, packet on Friday, because it wasn't quite ready yet. But we have to have it on display for 30 days before it is approved. So we really needed to present it tonight, so it can be on display for 30 days. We have two board meetings in between here, so if you want us to give additional information or additional presentations, we can, but we don't have to. And then on September 24th, we will come back and have a public hearing, and then board adoption that, that night. And by, by law, we have to have it adopted by September 30th. So that's why we had to do it and present it tonight, so we can get that 30-day public display requirement done. The key assumptions that we used in this budget, there's lots of them, obviously, but these are some big ones that we talk about. Evidence-based funding, everybody hears about evidence-based funding. The, the dollar amount for this year's budget actually came out on Friday afternoon. I actually didn't see them until this morning. The gist of it is, we're going to receive 1.3 million more in 1819 than we received in 1718. Not as good as I was hoping, but still a lot better than it has been in the past. The other thing that's changed in that evidence-based funding, last year, we were considered a Tier One District. This year, we're considered a Tier Two District. That just means we'll receive, as a Tier Two Districts receive less of the new money than a Tier One District does. We're at 66% of adequacy. The cutoff between Tier One and Tier Two, I think, was 65%. So we're right on that edge. And what they, remember what they mean a percent of adequacy is, the evidence-based funding model takes a, takes the number of students you have, and based on the number of different kinds of students you have, they figure out what a perfect school district would have as far as the number of teachers and number of principals and assistant principals and special ed, and so on and so forth, and figure out the dollar amount it would take to educate those children. And our funding we have is 66% of that funding. So whenever people try, you know, we have a lot of situations out there where people are trying to use the evidence-based funding, saying that we might need so-and-so number of students. It's not really what it tells, or not students, but so-and-so number of That's not really what it tells, or not students, but so-and-so number of employees, or, you know, faculty, or whatever. But the simple fact of matter is, we have 66% of what it would take to pay for all of that. So that's kind of what the 66% of adequacy means. But the gist of it is, we get 1.3 million more this year, which is, like I said, a lot better than it's been in the past. Another big number, and I'll point it out later, is this continued spend-down of bond proceeds. Remember, last year, we issued bonds for capital improvements, so now, in this new year, we're going to be spending a lot of that money as a lot of these big projects come up. So we're going to have no revenue, but we're going to have spending. So you're going to see that in a couple of the funds.
On the curriculum side, we wanted to point out what was included, that we did put in the K-3 textbook adoption for ELA. We currently have the 4-5, and we were putting in the K-3, because we're focused on every child being able to read at grade level, by the grade three, so we want to have adequate textbooks. Of course, there's the increased SEL supports that we have in place and is growing. And then also, we've gotten the 21st Century Grant, and then the Pre-K Expansion Grant, so that's part of the budget. And then also, we have a lot of focus on the pre-apprenticeship. We got the new grant, and then the other one continues for the new year, and then also increased efforts in the career pathways in general.
We could talk about lots of things we put in there, but we didn't want to take the 100 slides we were threatening to use, so. At your desk today, at your seat tonight, I put the actual official budget packet for you, and that's what has to be on display for the 30 days. And most of that is the state's official format for the budgets. So to make things a little easier, we add that front page, which is on one page, all the different funds and a summary of everything. So this, I know it's too small to really see in this thing, and so I'm not going to belabor it too much, but we always have the right half of the budget, we refer to as the operating funds, which is education, operations and maintenance, transportation, and the IMRF Social Security Fund. So those are the, all the day-to-day functions of the board. The important thing on this is that, right now, with everything in there, we're planning a budget, or we're looking at a budget of a loss of 1.3 million throughout the funds. But when you look at the fact that the, that's like $160 million of a budget, $1 million deficit is like, you know, a fraction of a percent of the total, so. And I always refer to this as a very conservative budget. The revenues are what I expect to spend, and the expenses are what I expect to spend, but hopefully, we won't spend all those expenses, is, you know, is how I budget it, how we budget it. The other thing I like to point out is, we do have this $43 million of on-behalf payments. You know, it shows as a revenue, it shows as an expense. So that's money that the state is supposed to pay on behalf of us, to teachers' pension. They don't give us the money, we don't pay it. It's just a number that's calculated based on our teacher pension, or teacher salaries. So a lot of times, when people ask you what your total budget is, the operating budget's 202 million, but it includes that 43 million. So when I talk about, I usually talk about $160 million budget for the operating budget. So I just, most of the time, I take that out. But regardless, the important number on that is the $1.3 million loss, and then the assumption that we're going to do a transfer of funds of 680 to O&amp;M to balance that out through the year. So we'll talk about that later in the year. And then the other side of the budget, I guess the right side of the budget, is all the non-operating things, debt service, capital projects, working cash, tort, and life safety. A lot of those things have certain money that specifically can only be used for those things, and so sometimes they'll have a profit, sometimes they have a loss, just because of the way we do it. The big, you know, loss I was talking about is like this $12 million loss in the capital projects. It's not really a loss, because we issued the bonds last year, we have no revenue, so this year, we'll have expenses. But we do have the new revenue of the sales tax, which is that $4 million right there, which is the expected sales tax we'll receive, which most of that will be used for debt service, so. So anyway, so if you have any questions about that packet later, let us know, let Mick know, we'll do the research and let you, give you more details if you need it. Here's the operating funds revenue. A lot of people ask me, what is, what is, you know, what percentage of our funding comes from general state aid or property taxes? So I put this slide in there this year. This is the operating funds, those four funds without the on-behalf payments. So 30% of our revenue comes from property taxes, 38% comes from general state aid, federal sources is 16%. So most of our funding is not property taxes, unlike a lot of the school districts around here that get a lot more of their funding from property taxes, so that's why I put that in there. The other thing people frequently ask me, again, this is expenses of the operating funds without the on-behalf payments. So they always want, people frequently ask me, what part of the budget is salaries? It's 61% this year is what we're budgeting. Benefits are 19%. So the budget and the operating funds, 80% is made up of our employees and their benefits. So it's just, you know, it's a service industry, and, you know, we pay a lot of, you know, we have a lot of employees and that. So that's most of our budget is salaries and benefits. So people frequently ask me that percentage, so that's why I wanted to put that in there. The next steps, we're going to post the budget on the website tomorrow. It'll be at the reception desk tomorrow. We have two board meetings before, you know, between now and the September 24th, so if the board wishes, we can have another presentation, otherwise, you just ask me things as you think of them. And then, on September 24th, we'll have a public hearing and the board approval on that night. And then we'll file it with ROE and the state by September 30th. And really, that's all I have. If you have any questions, Carla can answer them for you.
Because you talk too much.
Yes, I talk too much, you tell them, so. Can we go back to the first slide, the top sheet, operating funds?
Yep.
Bingo. So in your assumptions, this includes, I'm assuming, the new baseline funding for charter schools? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that totals the incremental from what we were paying previously to the current amount is roughly?
The charter school amount has a specific line, if I, I'll flip to it real fast, so I can tell you specifically. But to make it more transparent, the state changed their form a few years ago. So on page, I guess, is it page 11? It's kind of hit by the staple. Page 11, there's, the line is labeled Line 6, which is the second line of numbers. It says tuition payment to charter schools, and under that is, under purchased services, there's a number of $6,381,770 on the page 11, top middle of the page 11. And that is the specific amount that, there's still some questions that our attorney's helping us work out, but that's my estimate of the dollar amount for the charter school this year. And so on this budget, it's in this line right here, purchased services, it's part, that 17, $18 million, 6.4 million is for the charter school.
And we've started paying based on, we've started paying based on that.
You know, the first payment's due on July 1st, so we paid them a quarter of that already.
Okay. And we estimate that's about $600,000 more than?
It's about $180,000 more than it was last year, but last year was $600,000 more than the year before. So it's like $180,000 more than last year.
Okay. And that, the fund it comes out of, the ed fund?
It comes out of the education fund, yes. And actually, I take that back. 400, the transportation portion, it comes out of the, or out of the transportation fund. So about $400,000 is budgeted in the transportation fund, and that 6.3 number, or 6.4 number is the education fund portion of it. So there's really almost 6.8 million is the total, because I forgot about the transportation portion of it, so. Because to be able to claim their transportation, their transportation on our state claim, it has to be paid out of the transportation fund, so.
Okay.
So it's about 6.8 million, which it was, it was supposed to be 6 million last year, then because of the law change, where they changed that we had to pay at least 97% of the per capita tuition charge, we had to pay them an additional $600,000 at the end of last year, for last year, and then this year, it's 6.8 million, or almost 6.8 million. So that's, yeah. So that law that changed, that changed how per capita tuition charge, or the percentage of per capita tuition charge increased it by that $600,000.
Mr. Adler, can I dovetail onto your question, or part of it?
Have it.
How many students are served by that amount of money?
By quest?
600. That'd be 600.
588, I think, the last number, so it's 588.
There's a calculation we do every quarter, and figure out how much they have actually enrolled, but, and then we adjust their funding a little bit based on their actual enrollment every quarter.
Similar to what the state does with us. So similar to what the state does with us, because we have to, we have to submit our numbers twice a year.
Right, for enrollment, yeah. Yeah, the evidence-based funding is now based on enrollment, and so their funding is a little bit based on enrollment, correct?
And we just adjust on that quarterly basis per actual enrollment.
That is your question, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on the budget? Okay, thank you.
If you think of anything else, let us know, and send me, or Mick, or Carl an email, and we'll get the details for you.
The next item on our agenda is audience presentations. As a public body making decisions that impact over 13,000 students and tens of thousands of voters and taxpayers, feedback from the public is critical to our success. Rules for addressing our board have been posted near our public comment cards, as well as on our website, www.purepublicschools.org. We welcome both your praise and your constructive criticism. We simply request that you maintain a civil tone to your comments, and respect others' speakers by limiting your time to the allotted five minutes. Outside of these meetings, of course, board members can be contacted directly using our district emails, and if you have a specific request tonight, please indicate so in your comments, and we'll have a staff member follow up with you after the meeting. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Taryn App.
I wish to thank the board again, and Dr. Kratt in particular, and her team, for getting the bargaining done. It's on your agenda tonight for you to either approve or disapprove. And I want to say again, and reflect back to the year 2000, when we bargained a contract, and it went basically for 11 months. There were $300,000 in legal fees charged to the district, which by today's standard would probably be $500,000. You know, I'm looking forward to seeing what the bill is from the, from the firm from up north, to see how much they charged you. I think you can do this by yourself, and have attorneys come in at the end and check over what you've done, and save yourself a ton of money, going back to the budget discussion. I wish you would consider that in the future. I have all the confidence in the world that the people who are in this district, Mr. Willis included, could bargain the contract at no cost to this district, except the approvals at the end for legal necessities by lawyers. I want to say also, a thank you to the people that were at the event on Saturday that Shaun Livingston put on the bicycle ride. Shaun Livingston is a tremendous asset to this community, has not forgotten this community. He's a father first, he brags about that in the newspaper. If you'd have been down there, many of your staff members were down there, Derek Booth was down there, as well as many retired personnel were down there. The kids were so well behaved, so mannerly, I mean, everybody I talked to were impressed with the kids who came and got school supplies. It was really a true event, much like the one I told Dr. Kratt when she was at Roosevelt, when they had the basketball, she and Tony Jenkins had the basketball event down at Roosevelt. You know, there's so many positive things go on in this district that don't get talked about. I think it's important that someday, you consider having Shaun Livingston to this podium, and recognizing him for what he gives this community. Jim Tomey is another one. He's not necessarily given directly to this district, but just his presence in this community, and what he did in pro baseball is legendary. I think we miss the boat sometimes by not recognizing these people. Tammy Lane was another one, District 150 student from Woodruff, who did the makeup for Lion Witch Wardrobe, and got an Academy Award, Oscar for that. I don't know if she's been officially recognized here, I don't remember if she was, and I think she should be recognized by the district. I know Mike Robinson, who I've talked about before here, went to Purdue and beat Illinois eight straight times, and went to NCAA tournament four times, and went to Argentina Pro League and played 12 years in the Argentinian Pro League, and was the second-leading scorer in all-time history in the Argentinian Pro League, now coaches out in Virginia, and won the state 6A tournament this year in basketball at the high school level. These people are integral parts of this community, and are the products of our schools, basically. And I think it's important for us to recognize that, those people. Brian Cardinal was one of my players, who was from Telona, who went and played with Mike at Purdue, played 12 years in the NBA, and got a ring against LeBron James and D. Wade and Bosch down at Miami. My son and I had the occasion to go down and watch him get that ring about six years ago. But when people achieve things, they should be put in front of their peers and the kids in this community. And again, I thank Derek for his presence on Saturday, and the things that he does, and the people he touches, and goes out of his way to doing this wraparound program. I think it's outstanding. Budgetarily speaking, and I will talk to the budget in August again, excuse me, in September, but busing needs to be looked at, you know, going back, but one of the worst things that ever happened in education was the dismissal of the K-8 neighborhood schools. I never saw a bus when I was in grade school, with the exception of maybe going to an occasional event. No buses ever came to my school, or left my school. And when they went to middle schools, that's when the busing got out of control. Money for busing is ridiculous. Lawyer fees, and Ms. Cruz is going to talk about this at the next meeting, but you know, we have attorneys coming from up north, charging us $17,000 just to come down here to bargain, and do things for you in this district. It's ridiculous, we pay somebody $17,000 to travel to Peoria to do your bidding, when you have these people, lawyers in Peoria, who represent school districts all over the state. Thank you, please reconsider these things in your budget.
Thank you. Next on the list is Adam Hopkins.
Thank you, board members. Based on here on behalf of Pay Transportation, last year, I sent an email out to all you guys about kid not being able to attend school, because we're not able to take them to or from school, and we are within the one and a half mile range. Last year was a huge mess over the fact that they never gave us a timeframe when we had to pay, so on and so forth. After we sent the email out, that night, we had a phone call saying, here's your bus kit, here's your route. This year, again, we put down when you did transportation, we never got a comment from the bus barn, and then we got the booklet for the school, they said nothing in there about having to wait till the end of September for a bus. So as we're looking at as parents, attendance counts does not count, and on the transportation side, we do what we can to get them to and from school. Most of the time right now, we can get her to school, but we're not be able to get there to pick her up. And we leave early enough that their grandmother comes to the house, and she does not drive, and to take care, make sure they get on the bus is for us. Last year, I also asked them within my email, that you guys looked at the transportation process for the paid students. Apparently, that was not looked at. I've already heard about eight other stories tonight, at open night, for the school, other people not getting capabilities for transportation. So I'm just asking, we need to start looking at this. I understand Mr. Dapp brought up the transportation budgeting, but there's people who cannot get their kid to and from school. get their kid to and from school. And we're, and when we do the enrollment for the school, Transportation Department knows who is going to need transportation, who doesn't, because it asks you within the form. If we cut down that yes, we need transportation, there should be another checkbox saying, we're willing to pay, and I'm not, I'm not opposing paying. I'll pay $200 for the kid to get to school, but because of our work schedule, it makes it difficult for us. So that's pretty much all I've got on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
When public schools are discussed, I often hear people blaming parents for the discipline problems. We've been playing this blame game for years, but so far the discipline problems continue to worsen. If parents, especially young parents or single mothers, do not have an adult in their lives to guide them in teaching their own children the need for self-discipline, where do you expect them to learn those skills? If we look at the history of why public schools were established, one of the main reasons was to teach children to live productively in society. Today, we have to find ways to teach children to control aspects of their own lives and temperaments, and I know you're, you're heading in that direction. The other, only other source of help and direction would probably be the church. Therefore, I think you will have to acknowledge that it is the job of the public schools to inform and help parents teach their children how to behave outside the home, and up to schools to find ways through consequences, et cetera, to teach students how to behave in groups. That is, to inform parents of the behaviors that are not only expected, but also demanded of their children at school. Both students and their parents have to adhere to the district's policies. I hope that any efforts to achieve these goals would be planned and carried out by Wisconsin Avenue administrators through their own ideas without purchasing any programs. I am sure programs have already been purchased, but I hope that all discipline-related programs for parents and students will be given the personal touch. Teachers should be asked to help with these plans. However, parents must understand that the, that the policies and consequences, et cetera, are instilled with and carried out by the highest authorities in the district. Behavior problems are so serious that in our schools, that an all-out effort must be made to restore healthy classroom environments. Years of high-stake testing took up excessive time when teachers, students would have, should have been engaged in learning experiences that involved the interaction of teachers with students and of students with other students. A greater problem is that discipline problems take up so much of the teacher's time, that students have to be given work that probably could be considered busy work. Keeping students busy with little interaction with each other is often necessary because students have not been taught how to socialize, an effort that must start long before middle school. K-8 schools allowed for more continuity. Students need to know how to get along in school and in this world. Children should be given the freedom to socialize. Learning how to socialize in school will obviously impact how children will socialize as adults. At school and at home, children should learn negotiation skills, problem-solving, and self-control. Of course, children must also learn how to accept and appreciate classmates who may be different from themselves. With the onslaught of No Child Left Behind, and just before I retired, I was appalled by a trend toward cutting out the teaching of literature to make room for teaching and testing the basics of grammar and math. Children and young people absorb much about life through reading and discussing literature in English classes. I fear that classic literature is not so much a part of English classes as it, as it once was. I hope I'm wrong. Good literature allows young people to identify with the characters in a novel or drama, and thus to find ways to solve their own problems. Good literature helps young people understand historical periods and cultures that are unfamiliar to them. Of course, reading is the most effective, if not the only, way for students to expand their vocabularies. Just as we learn to do almost everything through imitation, students learn to write by reading good literature. In the 1970s, I chose the book Five Smooth Stones, published in 1966, about the Civil Rights Movement, for my freshman-enriched class to read. I still recommend it as a way for young people to come to grips with the problems of that era, and how young people coped with the racism of that era. Of course, a return to courses such as Home Ec and Child Development would help prepare males and females to be parents. Please put your hearts and souls into showing Peoria's young people how they can control themselves and their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mr. Jeff Atkins-Dutrow.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, President of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. Just have something brief here, I'm here to recommend that you vote yes on the contract that is before you this evening. 98% of the members at our ratification meeting voted yes to ratify. During bargaining, we focused on three main areas, adequate time, adequate compensation, and quality learning conditions, and what we fought for at the bargaining table is what our members who work directly with our students bring us in our bargaining surveys. So we're fighting for what they bring us. Our feedback at the meeting and afterwards has thus far been positive, and we would certainly appreciate your support. I will be here probably until the end of the meeting, depending if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Any responses to audience presentations? Dr. Crotte, can we have someone follow up with Mr. Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you. I, what grade is Mr. Hopkins? Hopkins, what grade is?
I'm a 5th.
Okay. Oh, that's nice.
You go in fourth.
Fourth, okay. There is a process, and I, I, I hear you, and I, I felt it, and I hear it all the time. Franklin, Dr. Wood, let's, let's talk with Josh and see if we could, if we could, see if we can expedite. What, what happens is they wait and see if there's space, and there's a process, and I, I understand, so...
But all the way around this year, there is no paid transportation.
There is no?
No paid transportation this year.
Okay. So, Dr. Wood, can you work with them, please? Thank you. So thank you for, for sharing, and, Dr. Wood, well, she's over Franklin, and the elementary buildings, you're welcome. And Mr. Knapp had some fantastic ideas, it's funny, it's like you were reading my mind. I spoke with Sean at Soul Fest this Saturday, because I said, Sean, let's talk about what LeBron did. We can, we can do some, and he's actually receptive, and people were laughing at me, they're like, well, he doesn't have that money, but, you know, he, he said, presented proposal, and, but you're right, he also needs to be recognized because he's doing a lot for us, and for our community, so I, I did think about that, and we did have a conversation about, and he's interested in doing some sort of programming for kids. And Ms. Cruz, you know, she's, always does her research, but Ms. Cruz, I'm just really proud of where we're heading with behavior. When we look at our stats, students are improving socially, emotionally, behaviorally. We had, and I spoke about that at the convocation this morning, we have, we've subcontracted with Children's Home, and they've served about 800, 500 students, and, and based on their reporting and their analysis, they, they reported back to the board and to us saying that 80% of those kids have showed improvement due to the therapeutic services provided. Family Core, serving close to 3,000 students, they've reported 75% of those students are making improvement. An Elite, the teachers were surveyed, 80%, 80% of them said, you know, they're doing cafeteria supports, they're helping with the climate, student behavior, they're doing home visits, helping after school, so, you know, there's a big push for professional development. I talked about the social, emotional, and those five components must, must be taught, and you're right, we have to teach them, and if they're not getting it at home, then school is a really great place, and so it has to be done in the classroom. Alternatives, alternative pathways for kids, so not doing the same thing, and trying to identify students' talents and interests, and placing them in those environments, I think we'll continue to see improvement. I'm really, really excited about the plan, and Jeff and I, you know, that's one of his platform, we'll continue to brainstorm. We're doing a lot. I mean, the wraparound center we talked about this morning, the trauma center, all of those are huge initiatives, huge undertakings, that you won't find any, in any other district. So the, the team, Coach Booth, all the partners, OSF, USF, Heartland, OSF, Unity Point, I'm sorry, OSF, Unity Point, Heartland, and all those other partners, it's the entire community, they're coming together, the work that Alignment Peoria is doing, so yeah, I think we're in a very good path. Do we have a lot of work to do? Yes, but we have to, we have to work together, and also what's happening in the classroom must be meaningful and authentic, otherwise kids won't, they, you know, they, they won't go for it. So, working together, we'll, we'll, we'll get it done. The MTSS process is, is beautiful, and continuing to provide support for our teachers, so, I probably spent too much time on that, but yeah, I'm passionate about that, and I, I'm happy with the direction we're heading. As a city, there's, right, and we, but we can get it done, working together, and there's tons of support from the community. That's the inspirational thing, that's what keeps me going, all the support that I'm seeing from individuals in our community. It's, it's an opportunity for, there's some needs, but great opportunity, and we can, we can make a huge dent, and we will.
Mrs. Ross?
I just wanted to say that, can you hear me? In many cases, we don't really realize that we are honoring people. We have brought Amanda, who is with the foundation, with the Sean Livingston Foundation, and, you know, we've, we've asked for him to come, but he always sends her, and we have honored them with, you know, with a plaque of participation, because they've done a lot.
Tammy Wayne?
Pardon me?
Tammy Wayne?
Tammy Wayne, that's another person.
No, 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 this, this is, her, her name is Amanda, she's over the foundation.
For Sean's, yeah.
For Sean Livingston, and that's who we invited in. We did do that, so we would love to have him come.
We're looking to Tammy also, I'm not familiar with her, so...
Mr. Walter?
Just a point of clarification, I believe Mr. Hawkins said, do we not offer paid transportation? Is there a change? I'm not aware of that. I think they were told that they, we don't, we no longer offer that.
Yeah, I'll look into it, I'm, I don't have the details, so that's why, Dr. Woods, we'll work with him, and...
Okay, thank you.
The last I knew, we were, we do, we did, but based on space, and, and it did not happen immediately, it happened, Ms. Ross, I know you, we had this conversation three years ago, you were trying to get your grandkids, and you had to wait yourself, after all of the numbers were, you know, all the numbers were put into place, and then they realized, they took a look at if there were extra seats. So there's some sort of algorithm and, and routine, but we'll, we'll, we'll work with Mr. Hawkins and find out exactly what's going on, I'm not privy to all the details. And Josh was here earlier, if we had known, we would have had him stay.
What did he say to you? That we'll still do paid transportation, but they wait to see what the numbers for those who are eligible, before they can allow, you don't overload the bus.
So they'll be outgoing the information as well. Yeah. Mom, does that, is that, does that make sense?
It does make sense, but the fact is, they were dismissed two days last year because of the transportation issue. And we're looking after this in August and end of September, they just didn't ask to get him to school, but they came up, we just can't.
Dr. Woods will have a conversation with you. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is some informational items. First one is Pre-Public Schools updated organizational chart. Dr. Crotte, do you want to make any comments about that?
Actually, Mr. Wolf has, it's, it's just FYI for you, so please take a look at it. Like the budget information, it's quite a bit, there are a few pages, and if there are any questions, feel free to either just give me a call, shoot, shoot me an email, shoot an email to me, or, yeah, but it's, there's some slight changes, but for the most part, it's, it's the typical org, org chart.
Okay, great. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions for Mr. Willis? Okay, seeing none. Freedom of Information Act requests? Yes. Dr. Crotte?
Thank you, President Adler. Since our last board meeting on July 16th, we received three new, we have received three new requests, and there are also three pending, that, that was noted on the 16th. All of those were filled. We have received to date 32 requests for this calendar year at a cost of $250.
Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda, Mr. Shaw.
Okay, Mr. Adler, the consent, consent agenda is as follows. Item number one, gifts to the school district. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, human resources report. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, board travel requests for the 46th Annual NASB Conference. Item number six, board travel requests for 86th Annual Joint Conference. Item number seven, hazard boundary application for tree, tree-wind therapeutic program. Item number eight, approval of settlement, settlement agreement. Item number nine, independent contractor agreement with Lynn Anderson-Loy. Item number 10, independent contractor agreement for Patricia O'Shaughnessy. And item number 11, collective bargaining agreement with the Peoria Federation of Teachers, Local 780, as ratified by teachers on August 7, 2018, and that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like polled for a separate vote? Dr. Davidson, Avila?
Number 11.
11? All right. Any other items? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the entire consent agenda with the exception of item 11. Moved by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mrs. Jackson. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Mrs. Ross?
I do have a couple of questions. Item seven, when we talk about the hazardous boundary application for tree-wind therapeutic program, the boundaries, the hazardous boundary has changed, right? And there's going to be a buses added, do we know what impact that will have? Does this mean buses will be added because the hazardous configuration has changed?
Dr. Ives, do you know?
Usually when, if, usually if it's not hazardous anymore...
It's usually transportation may be provided.
Transportation, okay, so since it's hazardous, that means transportation would be provided?
Correct, if it's hazardous, not because you only provide.
Okay.
There's a set of criteria that we go through.
Right, yeah, we went through that, but I was just wondering, how many buses we might have to add, so, anyway. Then number nine and 10 are the same question. Is there a dollar amount for these agreements?
One was 15, and one was 20, I believe.
Is it listed in?
Those were dollars given to us by Caterpillar, and so those are external funds that are utilized to support the career, the Alignment Peoria career framework.
Right.
Career framework, so those are external dollars that, that I'm using to support Alignment's work, Alignment Peoria's work. One's 15, and one's 20. One's 15, and one's 20.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ives.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Any other questions on the consent agenda except item 11? Okay.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Seven eyes motion here.
Can I have a motion to adopt item 11, the collective bargaining agreement with the Peoria Federation of Teachers?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions, Dr. Davidson, Aviles, you.
I'm watching the bargaining unit, and so I need to.
Very good. Any other questions, discussion?
Just, I just want to speak in favor of moving this forward. I want to thank the administration and the PFT for coming to an agreement before school year starts, and it sounds like it was a positive thing, and so I would like to move that we adopt this number 11.
Second. Oh, it's all the second.
Sorry.
Rushing through.
Thank you.
Rushing through.
I would concur with my colleague, Mr. Walter. It's great that we have a contract to be adopted here tonight, and I really appreciate both the Teachers Union as well as our administrative team for working hard to get through the details and put us in this position, so. With that being said, I request that we call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Steve.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Six eyes, one, two, one of staff.
All right, that concludes our consent agenda. Any presentations and suggestions by board members? Seeing none. Any reports from board committees?
I have.
Mrs. Jackson?
We have a meeting on 16th. The Buildings Committee will be meeting on 16th at 9 o'clock. My brain kicked in.
All right. Mr. Shaw?
Policy Committee will meet Wednesday, the 22nd, August 22nd, at 3:30 PM.
The Parent Teacher Advisory Committee will meet Wednesday at 4 o'clock, this coming Wednesday at 4 o'clock.
Very good. Any other business for the good of the public? Seeing none, we are adjourned.